Okay, I call this meeting back. It's 32 PM. We're in an executive session for the purpose of discussing school safety. And I think we should say for the record that all members of the school committee are here as well as Superintendent Dr. Daly. So we'll go right to it. And I'm going to pull up the agenda on my phone there. The first we begin with public input. If anybody has any input, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. I assume we have no student report tonight, correct Dr. Daly?
There is not.
Okay, no continued business, so we go on. Do we have somebody here for the haunted playground to begin with?
So I'm not seeing anyone at the moment.
Well, I see Miss Luck. Maybe we'll.
Well, we can, we can go to Amy. Amy, let me try to give you permission to share. You should have that ability.
Okay, well, we welcome Amy Luckowitz, who is a proud BC grad, fellow Eagle with me. I will point out every time.
Every time. Hi, everybody. Tonight I am reporting on our core measurement results. As our agreement, we present to the school committee before we go public with our information and a brighter, a greater campaign. So I'm going to try to share. Let's see. Let's see how this goes. I'm going to try to share. Sorry, I'm not as familiar with Teams. All right. Hopefully, everybody can see that. Does that, are you able to see that? Can somebody just give me a verbal yes?
Yes.
Oh, very good. Okay. All right. So we always start with letting you know what our sample populations are. Um, as you can see, they, um, the, as they got older, the, the numbers declined a little bit. I did get verification from our partners at the federal level to still continue on and submit our, our results. Overall speaking, though, I will tell you, so our numbers traditionally have been very high and higher than most reporting coalitions, in fact. But for us, they were low this year. So you'll see response rate versus 2021. The 12th grade numbers are, you know, almost down 25%. And our consultant from that calculates its confidence level, but more importantly, the margin of error. So as you can see, the 12th grade numbers has a 10% margin of error. Take that for what it's worth. It's just something that we do keep an eye on. And as you know, we do.
Amy, do you want to go to presentation mode just to make it a little bit larger?
Oh, how do I do that?
At the very bottom, the very bottom, there's a little like, um, next to the sliding scale. There's a little thing. I think that's the presentation. And I'll just make it bigger.
Oh.
Or the button in the upper left that says from beginning.
Okay, there you go. Upper left from beginning.
Oh, I don't have that. Hold on, I have to do it. Oh, are you just getting my, you're not getting them, I'm getting them. Sorry, hold on a second. I am hitting from beginning and it's showing on mine. Is it not showing on yours? As if I'm doing a presentation.
No, it's not. It's just, it's.
You gotta switch the screens. That's okay.
All right.
Don't sweat it.
Sorry, gang.
It's okay if not.
Yeah, I don't sweat it.
I can enlarge my screen, but.
Well, that's not at all. Unless Dr. Daly, can you share it better or than I?
I can try to do something up.
Okay, cool. While he's pulling that up, I appreciate it. We use Zoom all the time. I'm not as familiar with Teams. What I can tell you, uh, generically speaking.
And this is me, so even better. We're not gonna be using Teams, so.
Google Meet.
Oh, is it? It's Google Meet. Yeah, I have no idea what I'm doing. Um, uh, what I can tell you is a couple of just trends that you're going to see. Grade six and seven had, had, uh, increase in drug use across all substances. And this is really an interesting to us because as we know, grade six and seven, um, lost two years of our direct prevention work for myself and Detective Lucci. Although they did have health class. Um, as you know, myself and Detective Lucci go into the classrooms and we offer supplemental education specifically around marijuana, um, alcohol and tobacco in the form of vaping. So, uh, that to me was particularly interesting. And, uh. Get me units. I have a little reverb there.
Just keep going.
Okay, um, so grade six and seven across the board, you're going to see an increase of use. I am happy to report, though, we did have some declines. Now, this is really interesting, our data collection this year. Number one question I got asked during COVID was what was going to happen with you substance use? Assuming the facts that obviously mental health calls were up and stress was up. But we also knew that access to substances as well as peer pressure was down. So we weren't sure what was going to happen. The 2021 numbers, because the, um, in general, the response rate wasn't that great. This was going to be the year that we were really going to have it, check it out. So I like to say overall looking, we're back at our 2019 numbers with the trend going down. Some, some increases, some decreases. And I did put in a slide about versus, um, the nation. So we're, we're talking about that. I'm going to give him one more second. While we're waiting for this also, I'll just report to everybody and remind everybody that federally we report on, um, we're required to report on four substances. Alcohol, tobacco, prescription drugs, and marijuana. We report on five. We separate tobacco out into vaping versus tobacco products. And that's really important for us because to us, they're separate behaviors. We also report out on, uh, perception of parent disapproval, perception of peer approval, and perception of risk or harm. So you'll see some of those numbers in here as well. All right, response rate.
Are you able to see that? I'm sorry. It seems like it's.
Yeah, I can see if that's okay with everybody, it's fine with me. Can you move to the past three day use alcohol?
Was this one good? Can you see that?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I hope everybody else. Okay, okay, great. All right, well, if you can go to the past 30 day use alcohol.
You're not seeing that?
No, we're still on sample populations.
It's small. Yeah.
Sorry, it's, it's not working on my screen. So what are you, you're not seeing it right now?
No, it's not.
You just scroll down a slide. There you go.
There we go.
Yeah, I'm just going to do it this way. It doesn't work. It doesn't play nice with PowerPoint, so. It definitely prevents Google.
You know, alternatively, I can kind of give you some overviews and then send you all the, the copy of the report, if that's okay, Mr. Buckley?
Is this?
Is that better? Okay, let's do that. Let's make it easy. Sure. So past alcohol use, um, keep in mind, I'm not going to, I'm not going to report to you, um, the sixth and seventh grade number because I'll tell you across all substances, um, they had an increase in use. For this case, grades eight, nine, and 12 had an improvement. In particular, the 12th graders reported, reported a significant drop. Um, in 2021, they reported 26%, um, 26.3. And this year, 19.05. That's a huge decline. Very interesting. I'm not sure what caused that decline. I'm happy about the decline, but even more so, if we go back to 2018 and 2019, we see numbers in the 40s. And so this is a significant decrease. In fact, it's so significant that I believe the feds will probably reach out to us and ask what we're doing about alcohol. And so I'm curious to sit down and with our coalition and review that. If the number is in yellow, that just means it's basically kind of on par as the previous, um, number. Uh, I want to highlight to you, in 2021, we did not collect any data for grade 11. That's why you see zeros for grade 11 in 2021. Uh, and marijuana, yep.
Amy, very, very quick question on this one or two questions. Number one, are you tracking the same students each time? Are you tracking the 12th graders each year?
So yeah, so basically, if you look at this year's 12th graders, that would have been last year's 11th graders. The problem is we didn't collect last year's 11th grade number. So that's not going to tell us anything. But it is something to look at if you want to follow, follow a class. And I'm going to speak to more about that when we get to vaping.
Okay, and then in response rates is, I noticed when you showed this response rates, 12th grade was like, was less than 40%. Was it similar the year before? Or is it just that, you know, it was 60% before and only 40% reported this time and there was a decrease?
Uh, the decrease was about a quarter more responded last year. But that was 12th grade to 12th grade. That was not 12th grade to 11th grade.
Okay. I'm trying to see if it's the same population to say that it was really a decrease in that same population from year over year?
No, um, that's hard. That's hard to tell with the 12th grade numbers because the margin of error is so high.
Yeah.
Yep. So this really speaks to why we need participation. It's very difficult to draw conclusions when it's not as apples to apples. Um, marijuana use, you could see, um, six, sixth and seventh grade use, um, increased. That's really concerning. 10th grade continued to hold. And again, some significant drops, um, in 12th grade again. But again, the margin of error being what it is. The ninth grade numbers, um, that's a significant change as well. I want to point out, though, that ninth graders had two years of Detective Lucci and I talking about marijuana with them from grade eight and seven. I'm not saying we are the prevention. I'm just saying they had extra education. Prescription drug use is the next measurement. And I want to be clear about this one because this one is the one that often frightens people the most. This includes, um, items such as Adderall, um, other prescription drugs for ADHD medications, anxiety, and depression. Those can all be included in the past prescription drugs, the, uh, drug use. The way that we phrase it is prescription drugs not prescribed to you. So if we have a student who is on antidepressants, anti-anxiety, or the such, and they are prescribed that, they don't, um, we don't count that as long as they're following the instructions of the, of the survey. Little caveat on that one. We get asked about that all the time. The vape use, though, this is where I do want to say something about class to class that you've mentioned, Mr. Buckley. Um, with the school committee support and especially the public school administration support, this year, we were able to put in fifth grade vape education in for the first time ever. This is the class, the current fifth grade class that we are going to be really studying close to see if we got upstream prevention in in time to see what their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade numbers are going to be as they move forward in the North Reading public school system. This is all about upstream prevention. And I'm, I'm so excited that we'll have a class for the first time as kind of like a little pilot to track how they did. And I'm hoping that moving forward, we'll get into every fifth grade class with vape education. It's that catch my breath curriculum that we've talked about before. Again, sixth and seventh grade number increased, drops in the other grades for the most part. And then the last I'll report on is the tobacco use. This is related to spitless tobacco, which is currently a trend. So these are pouches that go into your mouth and they don't cause a lot of saliva. So coaches might not see the students spit on the ice or on the field or something like that. It also includes chewing tobacco, traditional chewing tobacco, snuff, um, and items like that. But we do know nationwide, there is an increase in tobacco use among youth because of the vape epidemic. So basically, um, students become addicted to nicotine through their use of vape and become what's called dual use users. So they might vape, uh, inside, use combustible cigarettes outside, and in between even use this, um, you know, spitless tobacco. So we are seeing an increase nationwide of tobacco use. By the way, um, those do come in flavored products, just like vapes. And flavored products for tobacco, all tobacco products are banned in Massachusetts. And that is something North Reading put in place before the state. So the overall picture is going to be something we're keeping an eye on. And I, this is, uh, year to year. Some declines over the previous, not our best. But next year is going to be kind of our full back in action. Kids all in school getting a full dose of prevention, uh, upstream prevention supplement from us as along with their public health classes. And I'm excited to see what happens for next year. So it's, I, I hate to say it this way, but we almost reset the baseline this year. You know, 2020, 2021 through us, um, we were on a great trend, but, um, we're almost have to reset the, reset the button there. The last ones I'll just share very briefly is the student perception of risk or harm. What this means is, um, and you'll see here both parent and peer. This is how the students perceive if their parents approve and their peers approve of use or what they would. Generally speaking, if their perception of risk or harm is greater, then use goes down. That makes sense. If they think their friends disapprove of vaping, let's say, or their, their family disapproves of marijuana use, let's say, they do, we do see trends. So that is something that we like to, um, touch on, but that doesn't happen without, uh, parent interaction. So this year, we are really upping our game about parent education again through 40 developmental assets. And, uh, the Guiding Good Choices Program. Detective Lucci and I will be hosting more sessions on vape 101, marijuana 101, and hopefully some new social media workshops. Uh, we've had a lot of parents inquire to him through me about how to, um, effectively monitor their students Snapchat. And what we do know is the gross majority of access to substances that are not approved for youth come through social media. One that we always like to look at is where students use substances. And you can see, um, in the chart, using, using substances at home or a friend's house continues to be up there. I think this is really important as we continue to send the message that this is not a school problem. This is a community problem. You'll see the school on there here and there, but it is not at all the prevailing location where students use substances. And this is also why we need to have a parent involvement. This next slide is something that I just have an interest in, and that is the, um, age of first use. And that's the average across all substances. We want this number to be high. Ideally, we would want it to be, if they're going to use it all, to be in their late twenties, but, um, we know that's difficult. So this is among, um, students who did identify as using, they told us at what age they started. This is the first, um, first year, I'm sorry to report that we did see the age of 14. Quite alarming, as you see in the marijuana and vaping nicotine, which is again, why we have to get into that fifth grade classroom more and more. In the last two slides, um, compare North Reading to the nation. This is something that I get asked all the time. Well, how is North Reading do comparatively speaking? I always ask the rhetorical question back, what number is good enough? You know, just because the nation might be at X, the, we have to be at X, or should we be at Z maybe? So I just like to put that in. I will also just add that this is us, our 2022 numbers versus the nation's 2021 numbers because they have not released their 2022 numbers. So that is a little bit difficult, apples to oranges again, but I do like to include that number. And in some cases, you'll see us, um, being significantly better than the nation. That one, yep, in the past vape use, thank you. And as always, I like to remind the public that if they have any concerns, they can contact Laura Miranda. She's at the Police Department. She's our full-time mental health clinician, although she is, um, mental health and substance abuse. She is out on maternity leave, but she's due back soon. I always encourage people to reach out. She is answering messages and emails. So as always, we're here to help, um, any way we can partner. This has been the most successful partnership with the schools that we've ever had in 2022. As you know, Dr. Daly came with me to two national Coalition Academies and really learned about upstream prevention and the science behind what we do, the logic models that we use and the data that we need to collect. And it really is a science to prevention. So I open it up to whoever has any questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Amy. If anyone has any questions, please raise your hand. You did so well, Amy, that nobody has questions. Noel.
Hi there. Um, I may have missed this, missed this at the beginning, um, as I was working on my, my air buds. What is the format for the survey? Is it paper and pencil in the classroom? Is it, is there ever a consideration of it being digital or?
Yep, you didn't miss that because I didn't mention it. I'm sorry. It is done through Survey Monkey. We moved all digital about four years ago, I want to say. Dr. Daly and I will be working on an improvement plan to have response rates increase to go back to where they were in 2019. We removed the paper and pencil option entirely, like I said, several years ago. But just to clarify the process, I, I think this will be your first year of this. It gets approved by the school committee and, um, we don't give it to anybody before that. Then the parents have an open period where they can provide an opt-in, opt-out, and ask questions. The students are allowed to start, stop, or skip at any point. And that includes, you know, we collect other, other information that I share with the public schools related to sleep, related to mental wellness, related to school climate. Um, I would love to see a way for us to collaborate even more with the specific schools to collect information so that the kids are doing actually less surveying. We can kind of loop it all into one big one. On average, it takes students about seven minutes to complete our survey. Or this year, it took them seven minutes. So seven minutes out of their school time, um, well, for me is very well spent for the teachers. I'm not sure, so sure what they think, but, uh, they're very, they're all very supportive and they look at this information as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rich? Rich, are you there?
You're on mute, Rich. There you go. Nope.
Nope. We lost Rich.
Probably a good question, too.
Right, Rich, you're still muted.
Think you might be having a microphone problem.
No, you're not muted. But we still can't hear you.
I think I am able to view the chat if you'd like to type in the chat if you can read it out loud.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Your buds died.
Give her the headphone, get rid of the headphones and it goes, it goes better. Amy, I was just curious about, um, their, what kind of response you get in that parent, in that period of parent comments and opt-in and opt-out, uh, ability?
I'm sure you're not surprised that this was the most feedback we've ever gotten to a survey. Um, that having been said, it was nothing outrageous that we had parents who just had very clinical questions. I will share with you one interesting comment that we received from the middle school, a middle school parent. I want to say it was the parent of a sixth grader who felt like the subject matter was maybe a little bit age inappropriate. And upon further discussion among their own family, realized that the student had quite a bit of knowledge about what these topics were and that the parent wrote back to me saying, I'm actually very glad you're now asking these questions. And I thought that was some really interesting feedback to receive. And that's a question we ask ourselves all the time about, you know, age appropriateness. I'll tell you that the middle school versus the high school surveys are slightly different. Just by a bit, uh, but that was some of the feedback we got. We did have a record number, and I can't even say that it was a lot, but a record number of opt-outs. But it still was not high. I want to, uh, Dr. Daly can probably speak to it better, but I want to say 12 to 15 across all grades.
I think it was higher than that. I think it was closer to 50.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a, yeah, I didn't know that.
Typically, we get about five. So it was definitely different this year. But I think the political climate is just all about opting out of surveys. So, you know, I just wanted to speak to the, um, to the participation. That's something I work with Mr. LaPret and Mr. Han on quite a bit, trying to get that implemented. I think, you know, we tried several different strategies. I directly emailed parents to try to remind them to, to do this. I think it was, it was late in the year or two when we were doing some of that. And I think some of our seniors had, had, uh, I don't want to say checked out, but they were, they were, they were thinking ahead to the summer at that point. So, um, I think we can try to work on some of those things because as, as we said, that the numbers are key. All the data is only as valuable as the feedback we get and to see the trends and to see if fall through. It's hard giving up class time. It's hard doing it. And certainly when it's required or done during a class period, it's a totally different response rate. So we're trying to limit, um, we had so many surveys and different kind of, uh, interruptions to school this year. I think there's a lot of concern again about, about doing that. But I think I'm going to continue to stress with the admin team like how important it was. At middle school, we structured during a class period and you could just see the total difference in the response rates. Ninth and 10th grade, the same thing. So we did it during the phys ed health blocks when they have a class. Doesn't really exist for the 11th and 12th, so we did it during power block, but it was more optional for the students, so. Something we'll continue to talk about.
And I'll say again, this is the best collaboration we've ever had with the public school administration. And, uh, your whole team, Dr. Daly, it was great, as you know, from that big achievement to getting to fifth grade vaping education. That's it. I can't understate how important that is. So that was great and, uh, looking forward to more collaborations.
It's really powerful. We've added specifically to our plan, some of the cooperation, you know, our district strategic plan, having specific references to health and health equity, um, is a big part of what Amy's doing and also something we're looking at in, um, in our town, you know, in our plan as well.
Okay, thank, thank you, Amy. We appreciate you. We appreciate the updates. I know that, you know, you and Officer Lucci worked very hard on this, so, um, you know, really appreciate all the work you're doing. And just to remind people, a lot of the stuff Amy works on is stuff that she got funded herself. So she actually got the grants from the federal government to do her, her own job. So it didn't even cost us money on a lot of this.
At all. I pay for everything. And we'll continue that as long as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure that this gets posted on our website and I'll send it to you, Mr. Buckley, so that you can share it with the, our copy. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, and I think we always appreciate that you kind of give us the first view before it goes public. She always likes to share it with the committee, so we appreciate that. But nothing certainly, certainly some concerns, but nothing overwhelmingly alarming, so.
I'm looking at it again as another baseline.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. When we were saying goodbye, I almost clicked add meeting and I shouldn't have done that.
I almost did as well.
So used to saying goodbye on meetings now.
It, so I, while we were saying that up, I was, I was corresponding with Miss Kane and there was a misunderstanding about, uh, the meeting being tonight versus August 25th. So, um, they're not prepared to present tonight, so we will just postpone that. It's a preview of the haunted playground and it's, as you know, it's always student-driven. I've sat through the presentation, so has Mr. Maloney and other people in town. It's really student-driven and so it makes, you know, a lot of sense. We have, we have time to consider it, so we'll just have the students do that. If not August, we'll do it in, in early September, so.
Perfectly fine. Okay. And we're going on to evaluations, which I think I'm turning over to either you or Jeff and Noel. Oh. Let's start with superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, do we want to start? Jeff and Noel, do you want any comments from the, our meeting or?
Yeah, so I, I mean, just briefly, we met, uh, we met last week to go more procedurally. Take a look at the documents, take a look at, uh, um, the material that, that Dr. Daly had, uh, had not only worked up, but also what was done in the past as, as well as just how things are done generally. And from there, I just recently created a new folder for us to do internal reviews. That's a private folder that Dr. Daly, sorry, he won't be able to see it. But, uh, that's open to the school committee. So the school committee members should be able to, to have access to that folder and the documents therein. The documents are labeled as review, um, where we can do passes on the documents on our own. And then when we're ready and we finalize it, we can share out a final copy of it. So that's the 10-second tour, the penny tour of, uh, of what we've done just over the last week or so. Dr. Daly or Noel, uh, feel free to hit me if I've said anything inappropriate or out of bounds.
It sounds just about right.
Thanks, Jeff.
And from, from a timing perspective then, so the goal would be to fill this out in before, you know, maybe a week before the following meeting so that you guys have time to collaborate, to put everything together, collate it.
Uh, and I'm going to, I'm, as I told Noel, I'm going to do, uh, just a first pass look at it, uh, over the next week. So I'll start adding my comments in. And I, I will add them as review comments into it. So we can just sort of look at it iteratively. So if you're not seeing the comments I'm writing, uh, let me know and I can help you, uh, just, like I said, I'm just going to do. Uh, just like I said, I'm just gonna do a, a review comments rather than just filling in the form. So you can see who wrote it and I can change it iteratively.
So should we wait till early August to do it? Sorry. Should we wait until, should we wait till early August to add comments to let you do your first one?
Yeah, I, I would say, yeah, give me a week.
Okay, and then do we want to set a time to make sure everyone has their comments in by working around vacations or whatnot that everyone they have planned so that we have some time at the tail end?
Sure.
Um, let's see, we are meeting at the end of August. Um.
19th is the next meeting.
Um, oh, I thought, you mean the 29th?
29th.
29th, right, sorry, 29th.
Okay, all right. Um, so I mean, we could say like, we could say the 19th, we could say the 26th. I don't know, um, if anyone is going to be away for a big chunk of August. I want to make sure everyone has a chance to.
No, just that week.
Take a look.
Uh, I'll, I'll be gone, the late August, but I'll be gone like that, that 19th through like the 25th or so. Um, don't worry about me. Uh, I can do this anywhere. So, you know, I'll access it remotely. So don't, you know, just get, as long as things are done about a week ahead. Um, don't plan around my schedule because I can work from anywhere.
All right, so the 22nd, if everyone can have input in by, that would be great.
And, and we, we can do it earlier if we can. I mean, if, if, if Jeff, if you just hound me when yours are in, I'll, I'll, I'll promise to try to get it done within a day or two. I, I, I know you guys are doing a lot of the work, so I don't want to hold you up on yours.
And the other thing is it can be done iteratively. So as, as elements are finished, you know, I can, I can finalize sections or, or, or what have you. Um, so it doesn't have to be a big bang at the end. Um, I know that's probably a little ambitious, but uh, just to put it out there, if there are easier sections or things people want to write up, great, uh, we can finalize those early. But again, that might be a little too ambitious.
All right, can I just show the, the site very quickly just to make sure everyone's clear? And um, so I've, I've done a digital portfolio somewhat through the, through the website. Um, I think I want to share the final site. There we go. So this is what you would find. I'll, I'll share this out again with you just to make sure you have it. The timeline for this year again, what we just went over is to share this in public. Um, to review the goals as written, they're written here. Um, so you can review all the goals. They're also included, I re, I put them in the evidence folders as well. This is the uh, the formative portfolio, um, with some of the data that was presented for the mid-year. So for Jeff and Noel especially, um, it's here, but I also, I put it again inside these folders. There are some hyperlinks. A lot of these goals are things that I have presented on at recent meetings. And so um, I did put some links in some presentations, but it's a lot of a narrative summary. But if there's some pieces of evidence that you like or anything that you have questions about, I'm happy to share. Um, and I'm just seeing if this um, opens up. But when you get in, you should be able to open the documents. And it would look like this. It's taking a minute to load here. Um, but I wrote the goal and then I copied in what was done during the mid-cycle. And then I provided an update of what we've done um, in a summative, in a summative uh, time. And so, you know, I've included, our first goal is really about the alignment of all the districts plan. One thing that we discussed, um, you know, in the goal was that you would have seen the school improvement plan goals by this point. Uh, we did decide last um, month to move those to September. So I did describe that, you know, things have really changed and you will be seeing some very different um, goals. It's a different process at all the schools, including the high school, which I think had the most um, work to do. They've done the most and they've had, they had a lot of changes to make, to make it more in line with some of the other plans. And so um, but everything else, I think you, you will have seen our student learning goal. Um, the, that was related to my, um, I'm sorry, my professional development goal was related to the programs that I've been a part of and the conferences I've attended. The, the goal around creating NRPS 2025, you'll find a lot of evidence there. And I've shared with you all of that piece. I, I would like to share um, that we did get some public comment based on what was put out. So I've, I've given sort of a summary of that, but I will say we had about 20 respondents to the public comment on NRPS 2025. Um, certainly um, a lot of um, praise for the work that's been done. Some general just praise for the schools. And then I'd think on the other end of the spectrum, just some criticism of the schools. Um, and sometimes the criticism wasn't really aligned with the task. It wasn't really aligned with the school improvement plan. It was just general comments on um, on, on what was liked or not liked. But I think overall, as we've always done, you know, if I could sum up some of the concerns around DEI, it's about transparency, it's about not being political, it's about making sure that we're, we're, you know, there was a couple of comments about supporting diversity in our hires and looking at our practices, but making sure that we're always hiring the best candidates. So I think, I think it's clear and I think you are all aware, that's certainly my vision and the vision of our administrative team. But I think it's important that we continue to communicate that to everyone. Um, to make sure that we're, you know, removing some barriers and making sure that our candidate pool is as diverse as possible, but still ensuring that we're always hiring the best candidates. And I, and I know that that's what we're doing and will continue to do. And then making sure, and the whole reason why we have across the board, student community voice and transparency and hearing from all stakeholders, is so that we make sure that um, all of these terms, diversity, equity, inclusion are, are a part of this. And you're going to see that we're going to work the word belonging in. That was something that came through in the feedback and through some of our conversations. Um, as being a part of that diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Belonging is sort of what it leads to when you're able to have an inclusive environment that people feel like they belong. And so we think that's really important as well. Um, so all that information is there in the um, in the goals. And then the last part are the proposed goals for next year. And so you can see what we proposed, the, some of what we discussed um, at the meeting. As I've sort of been saying to everyone all along, for all educators, in your first three years, you do a one-year plan with a um, formative cycle that's mid-year and then a summative that's in the summer. Um, my hope is that at the, this is the end of my third cycle, I'd be able to move like all of our administrators and teachers after three years into a two-year cycle. We still would have annual check-ins and, and Jeff had asked about what is, it's in my contract about annual evaluations, which there would be. It would just be, there'd be a, a formative evaluation every year and a summative evaluation the next year. So every two years, it'd be a summative, but there would be an annual evaluation. And so one of the things that I've proposed is, is going to the two-year plan. The other part is, and this is sort of across the board with all the administrators. And I think this is something Mr. Buckley had said from the outset, was about having less goals and more of a focus. So I've scaled it back to, to the student, uh, student learning goal, the professional practice goal, and then two district goals, and they're all drawn and aligned with um, the district plan. But essentially, the COVID goal, knock on wood, I, I, I felt like I don't need to continue um, next year. And then the communication goal, which was really, the feedback I got last year was, um, you know, does that really need to continue? Or should that be different? And I said, I wanted to see what that would look like in a non-COVID year. I didn't quite get a non-COVID year, but it was enough to do it differently. Um, and so I felt like I, it was time to, to move away from those two. So that's the suggestion. The goals are focused um, very specifically around MTSS, around um, NRPS 2025, teaching and learning, using data to inform instruction, working with our administrators on um, the new, there's a new administrative evaluation rubric that involves the cultural responsive uh, teaching protocols. And so we worked all of that into the goal. So that's part of it too. So before the 29th, hopefully we can do the, the superintendent's um, you know, a review of my progress, but then also talk about my goals for the upcoming year. Any questions about this?
Mr. Rick Allen.
Um, so I just wanted to clarify, this that you're showing us is separate from what Jeff has shared with us just, just today, right? And did you share with this with us already, this, 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 these pages?
It is. I'll, I'll share it out again. This is the, this is my school, this is my website, so it's different. What Jeff shared is the evaluation. This is, this is basically my digital portfolio. So it's a, it's a website that then has all of this information. So it's the same link as, as in the past, um, but I will, I'll make sure that that's linked out in the uh.
And I could add more to the folder. I just, I was just adding the, uh, the review forms. Um, and, but I can add whatever I want to the folder. Whatever, whatever's easiest.
Noel?
Just to clarify, so I, I'm accessing this, but um, Dr. Daly, where are um, we, where are we inputting our evaluation for you? Is, is there going to be, is there a, based on this form or is there an external form?
That's, that's what I sent, that's the link I sent out. That's the stuff I shared. And I can send that again.
I didn't see it. Uh, when did you send it?
It's about two hour, two, two and a half hours ago.
Yeah, okay. I, I must not, it's fine. I got your, your email. I just didn't see this part on it. So I just have to check again. That's probably my error.
I'll, I'll reshare after all this, uh, and if there are any questions, I will either figure out a new way to do it because I probably am doing something wrong or uh, uh, or I can walk whoever through it. No big deal.
And, and when Jeff adds his thoughts, that'll kind of be a, a rubric on how we can do it as well. So it'll be, it'll be a good example for us afterwards. So if you, if you do, if you take the first crack at it, then you share it out again, we'll then be able to
Absolutely.
sort of piggyback on that.
So what I, what I've got on the screen now, just for a quick glance, this isn't, this is not the same document because I think Jeff made a separate copy that, but this is just the blank document. But just so you see, it's um, you provide feedback on whether I did not meet, made some progress, made a significant progress, met or exceeded the goals. Um, and then it's on the, it's a evaluation on each of the standards, standard one, two, three and four, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. Um, and then you give an overall rating. The, there is a place for comments here. And then there's also the ability to give the specific feedback on each of the goals here for those different categories. And then there's also um, each indicator, you can give um, the evaluation for these different categories here. For standard one, standard two, standard three and standard four. So that's the document that's being shared out. Um, I, I know that in the, the shared folders, I worked with Mr. Papa Silvio to update. You should be able to access the last couple of years as well. Um, just to see, you know, how I did last year and um, hopefully I'm moving in the right direction and, and not slipping behind. And we did a similar um, process for the school committee goals, which we can talk about in a moment. And I just, I just dropped the, the site there in the chat. Um, you should be able to access that as well.
Okay, Noel?
I'm just letting you know, Jeff, I can see it now. I was looking at my phone before, so I apologize. I could only open one of them. So, so no worries. You don't need to be tense. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, other comments or thoughts? My, my only question or thought on this one is, and maybe our calendar is the right calendar. I mean, it makes sense to be evaluating at the end of the year, school year and starting again. The only thing that is apparent this year more than any year is we have two new members. We're going to be doing the school committee evaluation when they weren't part of the school committee now. Maybe, maybe you ran because you hated the school committee before and so you're going to evaluate us as, you know, whatever. But that's the only thing that's a little bit off is that our evaluations are, you know, afterwards. And you have two new members evaluating the superintendent who's only, you guys have only been here in this role for a couple of months. I don't know if there's a better way to do it with the election than April. I mean, it's, it'd be hard to do it before the year's done, but have we thought about that at all?
Well, from, from my perspective, um, it, it's based on the, it's based on the evidence provided.
True.
So um, you know, assuming there is evidence and I know there is because it's been added. Um, that's what it gets based on plus level of the interaction with things I know. So it's, it's personal experience, but it's mostly based on evidence that's provided.
In, in the end, it, it, the election, I don't think can control everything. I mean, we have the election right before we have the budget vote and we have the election right before a lot of other things. I think it probably makes sense to be, you know, in the summer afterwards, but it was just a thought and, I don't know.
I'll just add for, for Jeff and Noel, you know, part of what this Ed eval program that's been around for over 10 years now was the, the model they said was, you know, you don't want to produce the wheelbarrow of evidence. You want to provide, you know, keep it focused, have some evidence. The binder should be this thick, not this thick. And we still get from some of our teachers, these, these thick, huge binders with every lesson they've ever done, every email they've ever sent. And we really don't want that. We want them to go deeper with and, and really demonstrate more focus. So I'm trying to model that and I'm trying to keep it as streamlined as possible. And as I said, a lot of what I, I've, I try to update you continuously through our school committee meetings, which is similar to what we try to do in the education side. It shouldn't be about the binder as much as it's about the ongoing conversations. So I do think that the evidence that's in the folder stands, but if, like I said earlier, if there's anything that you have questions for and think I should add something or to show more, I'm happy to submit additional evidence into the folders, so.
Rich?
And Scott, to your point about, you can, it sounded, it sounded like you were more talking about the school committee evaluation than the superintendent evaluation in terms of the new members, or maybe it's equal, but.
It would be both, but probably more for school.
Yeah, uh, uh, you know, if, as we continue to work to sort of uh, bring that process, you know, in line with the, you know, similar to the, the process that Dr. Daly goes through, maybe we can begin to build evidence throughout the year so that a, a new member coming on board can evaluate that a little, as well. It's not something, not something we've really done before, except, except that there are, sometimes there are discussions in, in meetings and, and school, you know, public meetings. But um, definitely, you know, we can maybe work to document what we're doing throughout the course of the year a little bit better as well. Certainly I can.
Should we transition to that agenda item?
Yep, if there's no more questions on the superintendent's evaluation. I would say for the school committee, I would say for timelines and process, I assume everything's very similar. Um, I don't think we have to repeat everything again, but to sort of guide us through how we're doing the school committee.
Yeah. I was just going to say, you can see what I highlighted there in green, which is, this document actually says it's meant to take care the month before the town election. So we didn't, we didn't do that. Um, so what we, what we did here was we did combine the two processes. It's, this is a suggestion, um, but we've sort of done two different goal setting. This is really the, your self-assessment. That's a little bit broader. This is last year's and it's just highlighted and those can be replaced. But this is where you're addressing um, overall, under the four domains, how you're doing, it's sort of a gauge. And then the um, what we did, just to streamline it, is we added the goals and we, we use a similar format to what you're seeing with the superintendent's format. So it's the, the standard of leadership and governance, the goal, the action step for the year, and then did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded, and it's for those goals. And so the, the suggestion coming out of that subcommittee meeting was, do we like the idea that they're combined? And I think just my two cents on the point about the, the committee, it's, it is interesting. It's like you, you could collect some evidence from the outgoing members and add that to the discussion. It's also interesting to get the perception of folks who have just joined for a month or two to where the committee is based on what they've observed, you know? So it, in that way, it's different. So there's, like everything, there's pros and cons to the timing of it. But um, Jeff and Noel, if you want to jump in, but I thought it was important to just have that discussion. Do we like the combined form and um, to try that for this year?
I mean, at first blush, I think it looks, the combined form, it looks good. Uh, talk to me next week. After I go through it.
I agree. I mean, just having it one place certainly makes it easier, so we'll see how it goes.
I do think, I, separating the sort of general, where are we at in, in terms of our responsibilities? And then also our goals. Uh, in the past, we seem to have our responsibilities mixed in as our goals. And so this is, I, this is probably a good separation.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? Same timelines, I assume?
I guess the only, the, the only- I guess the only, the, the only thing else I would say is, if I may, is um, I, I get the point of, of getting it done before an election. And we can certainly talk about doing that. I'm not sure that, I think getting the process done in, in a way that makes sense is more important than that. So if this timing makes sense for, from a, you know, school year standpoint, that probably makes it a, a better process than it's probably worth keeping it the way we're doing it.
I mean, well, I mean, the, the point, the two points I would put back on that are just this, the, the form that we had said that it should have, was supposed to be done before. So, you know, like I think in, in years past, it was done earlier. And to me, a lot of our job is done by the time the budget is passed. I think a lot of our, I think a lot of our goals align around what should be in that and kind of getting to the point of having a, you know, in a way, I feel like once we've gotten to a point of a balanced budget, it's sort of the end of a part of it. And then, you know, then the evaluation of how we've done and then the planning for the next year can take place. And so, you know, whether, whether we do it in July or whether we do it at, you know, the end of April or early April, I don't know. That, that's what I think. I think our biggest job is getting, is passing the budget and getting to that point. But again, if it can't happen, yeah. Jeff, do you have something you were gonna say?
I was just shaking my head, yes.
I'll just share that, you know, obviously we, we didn't do it in April this year. So um, I think we'll do it this summer and then I think it's fair to discuss and whatever the committee feels we should do. We can certainly look at that for, for the future. And then, you know, the question I am requesting to go on a, on a, to create two-year goals and two-year plans is the, the committee still wants to do a self-assessment every year and a goal setting every year is the self-assessment every other year. Things to think about, you know, about what your cycles are, so.
Yeah, I think we, I think we can talk about that at the next meeting, because I assume we're setting our goals and.
Yep, we have a, I'm sorry, we do have a goal-setting workshop earlier in the day on the 29th.
Are we, I mean, maybe we can talk about this later, but are we gonna plan on doing things virtual still? Or are we gonna try to be in person for those?
I'm open to either, whatever folks would like to do.
What's the date of the next meeting, August what?
29th.
Does the committee have a preference? Will people be able to be there in person?
Either works for me.
Yeah, I, I'm here, I'm around.
I'm around as well. And, and maybe this is unpopular, but I, since I've never been through this before, I find in-person a little easier, but maybe that's unpopular. Maybe someone can talk me out of that opinion. But for somebody, something where we're doing goal-setting, it's more workshop style. I don't, I'm not sure what to expect.
Yeah.
But feel free to talk me out of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would talk you into it. I, I, that kind of, that kind of session does feel like it should be in-person. If, if, if that's a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I may or may not be around, but I'll be around if I need to be either way. So um, I think, I think I might be, but um, that's fine.
The only thing I'd ask on that is uh, let's, let's agree upon a time, a reasonable amount of time before the meeting. Only because I, you know, the school committee, I might need childcare for, for my little one, so.
It's, it's posted as 4:30 PM, I mean, on the, on the calendar that I gave out, the 4:30 PM for the workshop and then 6:30 for the, for the meeting.
Great.
Okay. Um, I, I just, before we move on from this, I just want to thank Jeff and Noel for jumping into this. I know you're both new on this one. And so this is an area that I, is not my strength as a school committee member. And not that I'm saying I have any strengths, but like definitely not my strength. And so I appreciate you guys stepping up and uh, taking a laboring oar on this. So thank you guys.
I appreciate Jeff's strength in Google Docs, which I do not possess. I mean, I know OneDrive, I don't know Google Docs.
You might say something different if you'd seen how many different copies I failed with earlier today. Okay.
You had great first subcommittee meetings.
Okay, so moving on, routine matters, minutes. Does somebody want to lead us in the minutes? I don't know who took that on.
I can do that.
Diana, you take that on, okay.
Yeah. So I moved to approve the executive session minutes for June 13th, 2022 as written.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, all right, any comments, changes, roll call, vote, Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Noel? Noel, you're muted.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
All right, I moved to approve the regular meeting um, of the school committee dated June 13th, 2022 minutes as written.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
I think that was it, right?
That's all we had?
Yeah.
Look here, I'm trying to flip back and forth there. Okay, so next thing, we have budget update and Michael's not here, so I'm guessing there's not too much, other than what he put in the packet. Dr. Daley, do you want to go over the budget update or?
There's, there's no budget update tonight, there's gifts and.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then, any staffing updates?
For staffing, I just wanted to share that um, we have, our, our new assistant principal at the high school has started, Ms. Mary Ann Alonso. I planned on having her come to our meeting in August, hopefully, just as a, as a welcome before the new year. She's just started with us and she's offered a great start, working well with Mr. LaPret. And um, we also have hired a new human resources administrator who will be starting um, tomorrow, actually. Her name is Morgan Sorensen. So I will have her come and join us for an introduction as well.
Excellent, I, I have two quick questions, first one on staffing. With, with all the difficulty businesses are having in hiring, are we seeing any of that trying to hire positions that we have?
We haven't had a significant issue with, with hiring. I think we've, we've certainly seen less applicants for many positions. It's, it's sort of a strange phenomenon, not going through what some other schools are going through. Education as a whole is certainly seeing it across the state, across the country. But um, but we're, I am hearing from our principals that we're seeing less applicants for many positions than typical. But not so that we've got vacancies and we're certainly very excited about all the people we've been able to hire.
I mean, I'd be specifically worried about positions like special education, paraprofessionals. And even beyond us, do we know about bus drivers? Do we know if we're looking okay for September?
Haven't heard anything about any issues with that, no. Everything's looking good from, from what's on my radar.
And the, the only other question I had was if, if, a request, if you could share with us when you know the dates, if you would want us at the opening orientation for the schools and, you know, after Labor Day or um, you know, anything else that, I think you usually invite the school committee to a couple of different things. If you can share it even before August, the August 29th meeting, just so we can put on our calendars.
Sure, it's September 6th in the morning. And the only thing that might change is the time of day, but most likely it's, it's going to be in the morning. I'll double check that with Mr. Clean as we're just trying to plan the events. But it's the um, the 6th of September in the morning would be the, the welcome back day for staff. Students return on September 7th.
Yeah, ideally if you change it and you ask me to speak, you tell me before, before I'm on my way there that it's starting.
Yeah, yeah, we will do that.
Okay, bids and donations, Rich, do you want to lead us in this?
Yes, um, I move to the, that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the 21-22 school year from the Bachelor School Parents Organization totaling $18,223.37.
Second?
Okay, we have a second and, wait, who, who was the second, Noel, was that you?
Noel, sorry.
Okay, so, no, I just couldn't see who said it. Um, okay, any questions, comments? Okay, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the 21-22 school year from the J. Turner Hood Elementary School Parents Association totaling $12,752.23.
Second?
Any comments or discussion? Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the 21-22 school year from the E. Ethel Little Elementary School Parents Association totaling $12,998.86.
Second?
I, I will add one quick comment here, the uh, I think Katie, Katie Gabrielle, I think she's the president of the PTO at the Little. She reached out trying to add some other things to this list today. But, you know, I, I think she was concerned that she couldn't purchase something if the donation had been accepted yet. Dr. Daley and I assured her that we can vote it at the next meeting. And if something needs to be done to purchase it before, we will make it happen. But there will be some additions, but I, I just want to make sure that Michael's back to officially put him in there in the same way. So um, so there will be more.
Yeah, these are for the 21-22. I think she was thinking about purchasing things for 22-23, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wasn't 100% sure why, if there was any urgency to anything, but if there is, we'll address it later on. But um, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second for a vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous, thank you to all the PTOs.
And they're not quite done. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the 21-22 school year from the Middle School Parents Association totaling $5,442.31.
Second?
I forgot there's two more. And any questions, comments? Okay, we'll vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the 21-22 school year from the High School Parents Association totaling $11,935.25.
Second?
Any discussion? Vote here, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero. And now thank you to all of the PTOs.
Indeed. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $295 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame to purchase a table cover for the high school.
Second?
Any discussion? We'll vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,500 from the North Reading Youth Soccer to help fund the stadium scoreboard project for the high school.
Second?
Any discussion? Vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $5,000 from the Horseshoe Grill to help fund the stadium scoreboard project for the high school.
Second?
Any comment I'll add here is I know the horseshoe has been supportive of us in the past. I know there's new ownership, so it's nice to see the new owners also supporting the schools. So we'll vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of a box of antigen COVID tests valued at $1,600 from North Reading resident Rich Dusset to benefit the district.
Second?
Any discussion? We'll vote, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes five zero unanimous. Is that the end?
That is it.
With, okay. So, moving on, do we have any subcommittee updates?
We have the financial planning team.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back to that part now. Finance planning team, Matt, do you want to update on that one, Rich?
Yeah, I think the most time was spent talking, you know, taking a look at the schedule and seeing if we can improve the timing of the budget schedule for a couple of reasons. One is to help the school department be, have a little firmer idea in a more timely manner so they can begin their hiring process and also begin other decision processes as well. You know, having difficult conversations, as Dr. Daley puts it. But also try to have a budget, even if revenue isn't 100% settled, have a budget settled in time for all of the relevant parties to review and, and have an opinion on. Especially the finance, especially the, um, the finance committee. And I think we made some progress, they, they, they came up with a, you know, some good changes.
And I think, I think, I think there was a recognition that some things just hadn't been done as well, you know, or as quickly as they had in the past. And I think part of this is also that, you know, we have a very good working group now where there's not a lot of animosity about it. So I think in the past, there was a lot of positioning and I think we were pretty upfront, but you know, we need to stay on top of things. And I think the key thing is there are some things that are outside of our control, there's something that are within our control. And we really need to focus on what we can do, you know, and that's prioritizing what we would do if we had a certain amount of money. And then, you know, the things that are outside of our control is how much money we'll actually have. And part of that depends on the state budgets. And so I think there was a consensus amongst everybody to try to at least do what we're going to do. And a lot of that is starting with the, with the town side, starting their meetings earlier, just so that we can be cutting down at the same time. So.
Yep. Very much appreciated.
Yeah, and the, the other thing that they're talking to us about, just so everybody here understands, because you're not in that meeting. We address anything that has to do with a big amount of money. And so that group has also been talking a lot about the sewer project that's coming up. Because even if we're not select board members and we're not, you know, really the ones pushing forward or not pushing forward a, a project, um, it, it, the financial implications would impact the entire town. And so I just want to be clear that without going into too much detail, I just want to be clear that they're being very cognizant of that and really very much asking our opinions as well and, and giving us updates. Because just like the select board supported our, you know, our high school, middle school project and there was a lot of sharing of information when that was happening, the select board is being respectful, the fact that this could be a lot of money from the town as well. And, you know, just sharing thoughts on that and updates and timelines and things like that. So there will be a, a special town meeting. When was it, Rich? Is it going to be August or September, September?
There's a couple of dates.
Oh, I think it's.
Go ahead.
It's actually, it's actually after the October town meeting.
Oh, it's after the October, okay. I, I forgot, I, I was thinking of it before, but it's slightly after the town meeting, correct?
Looking at November, December.
Okay, so I think that, that's the main, that's the main thing we've been talking about, where the timelines and then those, some of the other big projects that are being proposed. Cause there's also, you know, a lot of money being proposed to update the fire station, there's other discussions and so some of that's discussed also.
The fire, the fire station is, is the other. The fire station is, is the other big one that, that will, will be coming down the pike in the next year, whatever period of time.
Yeah.
Not too, not too distant future.
And then, and Rich is much more involved than that because he's on the, you're, you're on that panel. What, what's that panel called?
The Facilities Master Plan Committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Right. Meanwhile, I'm working on a, a survey for the, I'm working on my survey for the, an intergenerational community center, which is a lot of fun, so.
There you go. So it sounds like. Sounds like the evaluation subcommittee also met. I'm guessing we saw the project, the update from that?
Yes. I would say.
Anybody else make?
No, there's a financial planning team scheduled for August nineteenth at eight fifteen AM.
Is, if the, if the policy subcommittee meets at some point, do we want to address anything? Whatever, we, we can talk about it later on, but.
We, we have, we are going to set a date. I didn't have it in time for this, but it's Jeff and Noel again. And we do have a few things that we want to discuss there. We're, one thing that we're looking at, we're, we're looking at to switch some of our sign-offs for parents to electronic. And there's a couple of things that we might have to change formatting-wise that we're gonna try to take a look at. You know, so there's, there's some pieces there and there's some other things as well, so.
Well, and I, I think even, even in our goal session, we can maybe talk about this a little bit because I think some of the policy stuff can come out of that also. Because even, for example, tonight, like, did we have to have a public input or not? You know, everybody knows masks, masks doesn't require it. We do have one statement in our policy that says comments can be during public input, but doesn't talk about whether there will be a public input or not. And there's nothing really specific in there. And I think there needs to be a lot of discretion in that. But I think it's worth looking at that policy as well and just seeing if, you know, if there's any updates that should be proposed there as well. And I think that's part of what we were talking about for some other, other things, like what the role the committee is, things like that. But we can talk in our goal, goals on that.
Sounds good.
That's really the the subcommittee updates. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
I just wanted to share this, you may have seen in the paper and, and it may have been shared with you that Representative Jones and Senator Tar secured a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in funding for budget that includes twenty-five thousand for the schools for continuation of our one-to-one program and also forty-five thousand dollars, which would help, would help with the cost of special education vehicle. I know it was reported as two vehicles, but that wouldn't cover two. And, and quite honestly, as we've gotten quite, if you've looked at cars, new cars, old cars, everything's gone way up right now. So the price of the vans has gone up, as you can imagine as well. But obviously, the forty-five thousand would go a long way to helping us improve that and support that fleet. So that, I believe, is on the governor's desk at this time, but, but I just wanted to mention it. And I think, you know, a formal letter of thanks for this and recognition is important. I did send a sort of an informal thank you email just for their consideration because this, this really does help us with these initiatives.
It makes sense. Possibly we can, you know, address something and send it out or, I don't know. We, we, Dr. Daly, you and I can talk about that too. I'm happy to send one on behalf of the committee as well, but.
And then, and did I hear, did I hear correctly that the state has included funding for free school lunches continuing? Hasn't been passed yet, but it was in the most recent budget?
It, it was, yeah. Sort of a universal continuation, which is great news for our kids, great news for our cafeterias, great news for, for everything. I think there's just a, a bottom line thinking that, you know, for some kids, they're getting more their, their healthy choices at school. And so just to provide that for everyone. And by allowing it to be choice-driven, I think we've, you know, we've seen our numbers go way up. And I think our cafeteria would just report, you know, the number of people who, maybe they don't want a whole lunch, but they just want a piece of fruit or this or that. They're able to just get what they need. And it's been, it's been great. So I think that's a, a great outcome. One of those silver linings of COVID, you know, that it worked well, it was a good model. And if they can continue that movement forward, I think that's fantastic, so.
Yeah, good, that's a good call out, Rich. And I'll, I'll say I saw that as well. And for, for, especially for the new members, you have to do the chart, the course with, with MAS C at some point in time. But there is a listserv that you can get on as part of that. And so I think, Rich, you're on it, I believe. I don't know, Diane, are you on it or not?
I think I signed up for it a while back, but I, I don't follow it.
Well, it, again, there's a lot of stuff that you hear back and forth that gets political sometimes. But generally speaking, there's, there's useful information there too, like budget updates and things like that. So, you know, so both the update on the school lunches, I pass that on to Michael Connolly as well, I was asking him about that one. And then the update on the legislation allowing remote participation, that being extended. That was all shared through the listserv as well. So it, it is a useful resource if you, you know, if you think to get on it, if you want another email chain that happens sometimes, but it can be useful.
Yeah, it is, it is really rough, really old school. You have to scroll through a lot to get to everything, but it is worth doing often.
Yeah. Okay. Correspondence, any correspondence, Dr. Daly?
None at this point.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, August twenty-ninth. We're gonna have the school committee goals workshop at four thirty and the general meeting at six thirty. We will plan on it being in person. As I said, the remote has been extended. So if it happens that one person needs to be away, that is still permissible, but we'll plan on that being in person. And the September nineteenth, we'll have the, a regular meeting of, with the school improvement plans being addressed. And that is it. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I just, just. I just, because of the late meeting with the twenty-ninth, then Labor Day, then the first week of school starting, I only have the one September meeting because then there's town meeting on October third. So I feel like the nineteenth is a good, we can do the school improvement plans, kind of kickstart the year and also give an update on reopening. Does that sound like it's sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine, I think.
So there's not a second September meeting is my point. There's a late August and then September nineteenth and then town meeting is October thirtieth.
And the other thing we could theoretically do if you ever needed to, if there's something that just needs to be approved and you want to put them even at the town meeting. One, I mean, I know we haven't done that in the past, but if there's just, I, I wouldn't do any presentations or things like that. But if there's some just approvals that are needed, we can run through some of that stuff.
I, I personally feel that that's fine to get us started for the year. So I just want to make sure that was cleared. Because we had moved, we had moved the date with Rasha and Shana, and so I just kept it at the, that's the other reason. There's another Monday we can't really meet, so I just kept it at the one meeting, so.
A long meeting, so. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Since this is no comment, Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.